I'm Kathy Toraca, one of the nurses at Quincy High School. I've been fortunate enough to be part of one of the groups at Quincy High called Paid Forward. The Paid Forward program is a creative, interactive, student-led program that increases student awareness and knowledge of substance use, peer pressure, and other current issues affecting teens today. The high school Paid Forward peer leaders provide support to incoming freshman students as they transition from middle school to high school. The students learn valuable skills concentrated on positive, healthy decision-making and resisting negative peer pressure. The following presentation is one example of the activities and the ways our Quincy High School peer leaders paid forward.
Which is an example of positive peer pressure? A: Pressuring a friend to do something wrong. B: Challenging someone to attack online. C: Inspiring a friend to take down a negative post. Or D: Sharing a rumor about a classmate. C is the correct answer. Go, C. C is the correct answer. First question is, which statement is true about bullying behavior? A: Bullying is unwanted aggressive behavior among school-age children that involves a real or perceived power and violence. B: Bullying behavior is repeated or has the potential to be repeated over time. Or C: Bullying includes actions such as making threats, spreading rumors, attacking someone physically or verbally, and excluding someone from a group or conference. Or D: All the way up. You all have all the ability to teach you how to bully. If anybody wants to call over anything, have them call over. So move from your group to your phone. D, this is my answer. The correct answer is D, all the way up.
So next, our substance abuse initiatives have fostered meaningful collaborations and partnerships within our school system, the athletic department, and within our community. Man of Health, Impact Quincy, Mayor Koch's Drug Task Force, the Fairon Foundation, the Gavin Foundation, Dove, the Thompson Family, and the Norfolk County District Attorney Team. All of these partners have provided trainings, funding, or educational opportunities that have directly impacted the students of Quincy Public Schools towards the goal of decreasing substance use. Two examples of our outreach to family and community are focused on sports injury management. We're providing educational information for student athletes, whether the need is to prevent an injury, to recover from an injury, or to prevent misuse of opioid prescription use among student athletes. The partnership to success, Impact Quincy, is currently working on two... to distribute two different forms of sports injury health information. The first is a brief list of questions to ask your primary care provider regarding sports injury. These are suggestions meant to generate thoughtful discussion and informative decision-making between the physician and the parent guardian to restore the student back to good health. The second distribution of information will include sports injury management tips. This will include injury prevention strategies like strengthening and proper warm-up exercises, aids to returning to play, and possible treatment options and alternatives to prescription painkillers. The Quincy Public Schools athletic department has also created a link on their website to the MIAA opioid misuse and prevention. And in order to ensure that both the student and the parent guardians have read the information regarding sports injury management, this portion of the family ID spring sports registration requires their digital signatures. We want to encourage the injured athlete to stay engaged in sports and participate as a non-active member of the team while they recover. Information sharing among the students, the parents, healthcare professionals, and coaches will best manage individuals' optimal return to good health and return to play.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Riley Helen, I'm at Quincy High. I'm sorry to let you all be so busy, but I just got to some song. But I'm going to talk to you a little bit about what we do in that grade at the high schools for our substance use prevention curriculum. We use the life skills training, which we think you're all, you seem familiar with this, we pull from this, substance use, good decision-making, things like that. We also go very much into the adolescent brain, the impact of alcohol, adolescent brain and the impact of marijuana, how the brain function is affected by substance use, and substance use and addiction. Those are our big core things we want. And the more we do these sort of things, the things we go to, we talk to the doctors, we talk all day, it's about the brain, it's so important they understand how it can affect them right now. So the Substance Use Prevention Curriculum contains skill-building activities designed to help students develop pro-health behaviors and attitudes. This program helps students gain the skills and confidence to make healthy decisions. That's so crucial, they need to make healthy decisions. Strengthen relationships with family members and peers, and resist the pressures to use drugs, alcohol, and backup. These life skills, combined with the understanding of how the adolescent brain is still developing, it's a big, long time, but it develops. And to be affected by these substances is the basis for our prevention curriculum. Video clips, along with hands-armed activities emphasize how making smart decisions is so crucial during adolescence. We've all been through it, kids don't believe it sometimes, but we've all been through adolescence, we've all made mistakes, we're all human, they know they need to make good ones at that time. So these little babies I have in here, which you're going to see in the clip coming up, are called Truck Hustler Goggles. We use them in class during our impacted alcohol unit. It simulates impairment, including reduced awareness, slower reaction time, confusion, visual distortion, poor judgment, decision-making, double vision, and a lack of muscle coordination. So everything that can possibly go wrong. It's also important to stress that these goggles only simulate visual impairment, and that when something's actually impaired, there are consequences as well, and so much other things going on. So what you'll see next is a clip from one of the health classes about explaining how these work. I have kids who want to throw it with them off or with them on. If anyone wants to try them on, come by one. They're clean and everything, so they're nice and said. And just these glasses in particular, I went from blood alcohol concentration of .08 to .15. So it's from the legal limit above to the next one, and they have different stages of these, and these are from the legal limit to the .15. What we're doing these days, this isn't exactly what it's like when you're talking to people. It's more showing us like we're in a kid. Because when you're talking to people, there are all the things that are going on in your world too. Even a single tap, walking with a pinch-up-grown glasses, falling in a bucket, it'll be very different without them, because they're already gone. But now imagine you have to drive somewhere, right? Does that feel a little difficult? Yeah? Play to drive someone else home. Yeah, two of these things are really fun to play, because a simple tap's a hot knock. How often do you get a drive home? It's not a good mix. See you on your way. Wow, 38 seconds, 39. Is that you a little? Yes. The other red line? The other red line. There it is. Take, breathe. What do you do now? Ah, here you go. Okay? Move it to the right, one step to your right. There it is, it's going straight. Alright, take down. Nice job, alright, continue on your way. There it is. Find it. Ah, there's the top part, right there. Almost. That's fine. Try it again. There it is.
Good evening, I'm Kristin Willhanna, I work at North Quincy High School. As has been demonstrated a lot tonight, a lot of what we each work on in school complements what others are doing. It's an important factor in increasing the effectiveness of what we do. I think SAD at the high school level is a perfect example of the impact a group can have because of the collaboration that it requires. Some of our upcoming initiatives are examples of this collaboration. We are currently working with the city to check on the possibility of hanging flags on the light posts in the Creighton Field parking lot. These flags will have safety messages such as buckle up and don't text and drive, in an effort to promote safe driving habits for both the students and the community that may use the parking lot for various reasons. We have already been contacted by the Massachusetts State Police, and they will return in May to offer safe driving education to our senior classes. And we also work closely with the Quincy Police and other members of the Quincy community several times throughout the year to further our efforts. These ideas and events are a direct result from working with and listening to the students. We keep a suggestion box outside of our office, and the students are aware that if they have an idea or speak of a speaker they want or to share concern, they can drop the suggestion in the box or come to speak to us directly. And if at all feasible, we will make every effort to make it happen. Of course, none of what we do would be possible without the support of the administration and the community. We have been incredibly fortunate to offer programming that has been funded by the generosity of others. In particular, Peter and Heather Thompson, in memory of their son Ryan, have generously funded several programs at both the middle and high school levels. They are committed to preventing someone else from experiencing the tragic loss they have suffered. In addition to their financial generosity, they are equally generous with their time. Peter has made it a priority to visit each high school SAD chapter every year to inspire the students to continue their efforts and involvement with SAD, and their involvement only helps to make our chapter stronger. We are proud of the success of our SAD chapters that they have experienced and are equally proud of the different groups that have grown out of these chapters, such as the mentoring program at North. The students expressed a desire for such a group, so three years ago, Danielle Fernandez and I, along with Mr. Shaw's support, started a mentoring program that is now at both high schools. The mentoring program is built on the belief that students can help students succeed. We began the program three years ago, and it continues to grow each year. More and more studies show that if students have a positive experience their first year in high school, their chance for success increases dramatically. The goals of the mentoring program include providing structure for freshmen to receive support and guidance from juniors and seniors who have been through the challenges that high school poses. Understanding the transition to a larger school can sometimes be overwhelming. Providing students the ability to make real connections with each other will ease their transition to both high schools.
Good evening, I'm Danielle Fernandez, Student Council Advisor at North Quincy High School. And over the past couple of years, Kristin and Ryan and I have successfully collaborated by bringing student government and SAD together to create groups like Mentors, as well as working on other initiatives, smaller initiatives in the year. And this year, we had the opportunity to really sort of expand on that collaboration. Mr. Shaw invited five student-led groups, so Student Government, SAD, as well as ROTC, the Rainbow Alliance, and also a brand-new student organization at North Quincy High, which is KISA, Quincy International Students Association. This was a student-initiated and a student-led group. But the idea really was that, you know, sort of seeing what these groups do in isolation and ways and things that they do, imagine what it could look like if they could sort of come together. And so that's exactly what we did on an afternoon in January. We brought 40 kids from each of these groups, spent the afternoon working together. The training was done by Visions Incorporated, which is an agency whose mission is to promote positive culture and inclusion and tolerance. And they had done training for faculty in October, so it sort of seems like the natural fit to sort of expand it to the students. The training was very successful. Visions brought the kids working right away on various concrete activities, and so they worked together to brainstorm some initiatives, ways that they could improve the culture and overall well-being of North Quincy High School. So a couple of the initiatives we've already completed and have done so very successfully. The first is the kindness challenge, and this was all student-led, so they came up with these ideas. The first day of Spirit Week, which was a Monday, the student leaders came into school about 6:00 AM on Monday morning, and every single locker, they put a sticky note with a kindness challenge, so examples like say hello to 10 people, or compliment a stranger. And the directions were, once they had completed the challenge, to take it off their locker and to stick it on a board in the cafeteria. So that sort of served as a visual, you know, sort of indication of all the wonderful things were happening. And it really sort of set a good tone for Spirit Week. The Wednesday of the week, we implemented the second initiative, which was, again, initiated by students, and that was very successful as well. That was a mix-it-up lunch. So we took a section of the cafeteria, put different colored tablecloths on the tables, and this was voluntary, so the students didn't have to, but if they wanted to, they could come down, pick a color from an envelope, and it would be assigned a table, and they would sit with a group of students that they probably didn't know. We had activities for them, sort of get-to-know-you questions, we had a little selfie scavenger hunt, and these are some pictures of the day. The feedback from the students was that they really enjoyed it and that they hoped that we would make it a maybe monthly thing or a continual thing that happened. In terms of looking ahead, because these initiatives were successful, Mr. Shaw is inviting Visions back, this time to talk to the mentors. So 40 sophomores will be trained by Visions, and this time the focus will be on welcoming the ninth grade in September. And we really sort of want the theme to be first impressions, and the idea that first impressions can be extremely meaningful, and we want the students to sort of think about what they can do for the ninth graders to make their first impressions of high school, you know, something that feels inclusive and introspective.
Hi, my name is Becky Fiddler, I'm from Bay State Community Services. Thank you so much for having me today and for including me as part of this. It's such an impressive school system. As an outsider sitting in here today, I might have to relocate to Quincy with my kids. So I'm fortunate enough to be here today because of the mayor's consistent generosity with funding, prevention, and intervention resources. So with Bay State Community Services in collaboration with the Quincy Schools and in direct planning with Laura Martin, we have been able to bring myself into the two high schools, working with the deans, the guidance counselors, the school psychologists, and the health interventionists. So I was first able to provide a half-day training to everybody who wanted to come just about kind of the substance use, the things that run the community, and be able to speak to that. And then that started the process with being able to develop ongoing group work in the two schools. So one might ask what makes me capable to do this with your students. So I have been at Bay State since 2005. When I first started there as an intern, I got lots of experience working with adolescents, which is not something I thought I wanted. After about a year, I realized it was all I wanted, and I had the pleasure of running the Adolescent Intensive Recovery Program, which for anybody that's been in the community for a while, at the time, it was an eight-week, five-day-a-week program for adolescents that had been identified as at-risk or already involved with probation. In some ways, substances were impacting their life. Ran that for quite a few years, and then had the pleasure of running our therapeutic activities program and connections programs, and then went on to run a residential program for adolescents here in Quincy. I circled back to home about two years ago, and I've been back in our outpatient clinic since then, and have had the honor of working with many of the community health centers as well, with their prevention wellness trust funds, to also work resources for screening to provide prevention services for substance use. So I hope that gave you some outline of who's trying to lead here. So what we are doing in the schools is, we have, I've met with the teams that we'll be working with, and kind of identified the purpose of these groups within the two environments, and being able to see what was the goal, and work with the, I always say the partners, work with the staff on what is the purpose? What did we want the kids to leave with at the end of this six-to-eight week program? And what did we want them to walk away and be able to kind of identify about themselves with their own substance use, or the risks that they might have for the substance use? So we've structured some of that, and then the students have been identified by a combination of the health interventionists, the guidance departments, the deans, and within the schools kind of working together as a team to decide who might benefit most from a prevention service, and how can we have kind of captive audience for identifying risk. So what we've done, and I guess why it's important to talk about why every student could benefit from this, is that we're aiming really to plant the seeds of knowledge and information in the hopes that the students will hear it now and remember it when they're ready or when they need to. So the hope is that this is prevention, not intervention. So it really is about planting the seeds, it's about giving them the information, it's about asking thought-provoking questions so that they start to think independently about their risk for substance use, about how substances are in their life, about their risks for increased use, about their ability to say no, about why they say yes, and really being able to explore all of that. The hope is that we're providing students with resources and knowledge to help them make educated decisions about the substance use, in hopes that we increase the amount of kids who do say no to substances. It's been, one of the things that has stood out to me today is it's so nice for me to be able to hear all the wonderful things that are happening with the teens in this community, because I'm on the other side of hearing all the struggles with the teens in the community, and by the time somebody is walking through the doors of Bay State, we're at intervention. We've missed prevention, or prevention has happened, and now we're intervening, and we're trying to provide resources and care and help to derail decisions that have already been made. So being able to be in the schools is hoping that we're creating an opportunity for communication that's in a non-judgmental way, that will open this door for the students to ask for help before they hopefully have to walk through our doors at Bay State. The goal of the prevention services being that this hopefully becomes an ongoing thing, we're piloting at this point within the two schools, and that the goal is that we are over the years going to have more and more and more kids involved that are interested and willing and wanting. We did start the groups this week, so it was a nice, it was nice to see the kids that were engaged, that were voluntarily there. Nobody has been forced to be there, so they were willing to go and willing to talk, which was really, I think, inspiring. How prevention has changed since Mayor One of legalization, I think our biggest, hottest topic. So I think the grand scheme of this is that it's so new that we don't fully understand yet how it's going to impact the prevention services. So what I anticipate is that it creates a barrier for prevention to help the youth who use marijuana to understand the impact that the marijuana can have in their development. That we are seeing that, well, what we're seeing that, let me back up. The youth, we all know that the youth look for loopholes. The loopholes in the systems, the reasons to justify or explain their behaviors. So I think that the legalization of marijuana is going to provide them a loophole. It's going to provide the prevention side of things a challenge, because now we're up against what their families are potentially saying is okay behavior, what their peers maybe are saying is okay behavior. So some of the education and the resources we have about trying to make some better decisions, they have some arguments for that now, that unfortunately have some backup. So as someone trying to do prevention, that's trying to find some ways around that and help them to still want to hear what we have to say about that, and try to be louder than that. And what is new with how we intervene? I think the largest, newest thing is about our screening tools and developing order for how we triage and make referrals to the appropriate level of care. The fact that we now have the opportunity to start that within the school system seems to be a key place and a primary place, considering the amount of time that the youth spend in the schools. So the opportunity to have the staff be trained and be able to assess where somebody's at with that process, I think is going to be pretty powerful to the community.
And I'm going to talk to you about collaboration and support, which seem to be running things throughout the presentation. Quincy Public Schools now has an exciting opportunity to partner with Dr. Harris and Dr. Knight. They are co-farmers and co-directors of the CESA program, which is the Center for Adolescent Substance Abuse Research at Children's Hospital. Dr. Knight and Dr. Harris are also professors of pediatrics at Harvard Medical School. They've done extensive research in the area of adolescent addictions. They've come to us through Mayor Koch's office and Blue Cross Blue Shield. We're collaborating on science-based substance use prevention curriculum and parent engagement initiatives. The curriculum teaches the neurobiology of the brain and the impact of addiction, while teaching the hard science. The curriculum also informs teens about healthy decision-making. The next slide is, shows you a tool, and it's a parent engagement resource, it's called Teen Safe, and it was created by Dr. Knight and Dr. Harris as educational tools for parents. We're going to be promoting this video so that parents have a resource to support their teen making healthy decisions. There's a short video that gives a personal story, and then there's eight modules that first talk about the problem of teen substance use and the risks that poses. It talks about the impact of marijuana and the cognitive consequences of the use of marijuana, the practical advice and support around how parents can keep their teens safe. So it's a very moving video that you see, and it's very informative and very helpful, very practical, and the whole thing takes about 20 minutes. So we're really going to try to promote that and engage parents to watch that. And the last thing that I'm going to talk to you about is Drug Story Theater. Drug Story Theater takes teenagers in early stages of recovery from drugs and alcohol and teaches them improvisational theater. They weave their stories into a theatrical performance for middle and high schoolers, and their treatment becomes the prevention of many. So we hope that you can join us on April 27th at 6:30 in the auditorium at Central Middle School. It's open to the public and for all community members, and we're really looking forward to that performance. Dr. Shoren from Castle School created the program, and he actually will be there, and he answers questions at him, it's very interactive at the end as well. And I want to thank you for your time and your attention for our presentation, and we'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Mara, I'll be honest, very encouraged. Incredible how many things are going on within the school system that we don't know about. Anytime there's a committee that'd like to ask a questionnaire or have a comment, Mrs. Lebo.
I have a comment and possibly a question. The amount of wraparound services for the kids is incredible, and stuff that's going on really, and it's great support from the community everywhere in Quincy for this sort of thing, and still stuff is happening. I'm very, very concerned about the mixed message of the marijuana legislation. I don't even quite understand it myself, but it's such a scary thing, and I'm glad that you have some things for parents. I wonder if this could even be a parent academy, because, I don't know, I'm a nurse, and I still don't know. So I, you know, the more educated I can be, and the more educated our parents can be, because this is a really tough time. The message has changed, it really has changed, and people are experiencing things in their homes, and it's very, very scary.
Yeah, I think it's new territory. I think that, you know, what people saw as harmless is not harmless, just the impact of, you know, the developing brain, the substances, and what that does in such a crucial time. And I think you're right, I think Drug Story Theater, you know, is one way to reach parents and tell a story about prevention and things, and then having Dr. Shoren available, I really encourage parents to attend that, there'll be information there for parents also, but certainly this is something that we're going to have to keep on doing and offering to our parents and our kids. We owe that to them, I feel like, we really need to respond and support them, this is a very difficult situation that I think they're facing, so I agree with you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Pogoli. I just want to thank Mara and the entire team for all the good work that you're doing. I mean, the good news is we're talking about these issues, and the bad news is we're talking about these issues, but the amount of growth I've seen, obviously, from the school system, and I know the superintendent has been so supportive with all the additional programming and information provided to families, intervention, the work with all the partners we've seen on the screen, Bay State and so many others, have been able to leverage the dollars, limited dollars we have in the budget with so many outside resources, which is just awesome. And I know it's more than a job to each of you, I know that, I see it in the work you do. There's no time clock here, you do what... You do what you need to do because you love the kids. And, you know, the stats are out there on all of the ODs and the amount of people we've lost. The things you can't measure is what you're doing. How many kids did each of you prevent from going down this path? We don't have the measure of that. But I would suggest that the numbers would be far worse on the other end if we're not knowing what we're doing. So I just want to say a big thank you to each of you. It's another job. It's a vocation. You're really doing God's work. I'm grateful.
Thank you, Mayor Koch. Mrs. Mahoney.
I wish Mayor Koch went after me because that's a better wrap-up. I apologize for not getting the last person that spoke your name from Bay State. So you're in the school system right now, is that?
Rebecca Fiddler.
Yep.
Well, Rebecca is the Substance Abuse Coordinator for Bay State Community Services. And we are so welcome to have her on board, and she did a beautiful job with the professional development.
So was it with the teachers that she was working with, or was it students?
No, well, we did a professional development because what we want to do is something sustainable, so we want Becky to co-lead with us the small group kinds of interventions. And we want to offer that, you know, everybody can use that intervention. That's a prevention. It's just, it's in a safer space because it's a smaller group, so there's more time to process. But Becky's done the professional development with the deans, guidance counselors, health interventionists, and the high school nurses.
So is then some students identified that she can work with and they volunteer to come work with them? Like, I'm just.
Actually, the groups have started.
The groups have started?
Yep. At both high schools, is that right, Becky?
One of the, at Quincy North is a week after vacation.
A week after vacation, yeah. So we were able to do the professional development so that we have like a pool of staff that can co-lead with Becky. And so we're just piloting this year with the first groups. So they're just up and going.
So when did you do the professional development? When required to develop, I guess. I just want, I'm just trying to see that math because I think that's a very exciting addition to what's happened at the Quincy Public Schools. And I'm just going to say, so thank you very much for joining. We have, as Ms. Lito said, we do have incredible wraparound services. And no matter how much we try to prevent things from happening and happening in our schools, they happen in our schools. And oftentimes, we paint a different type of picture here, which everything sounds great, but you guys are living in the school systems and you see what's happening every single day. And I agree with Ms. Lito also. Drugs are everywhere, and prevention is really education. And I applaud exactly what Mayor Hinch just said about how we're actually trying and we're doing, we're doing a much better job than we ever have by talking about the substances and the things that are happening in our schools. But with marijuana change and edibles, we didn't talk about edibles tonight. And that's the thing that's really scary because kids are so impressionable. And that loophole that you spoke about, it was one thing to have the substance in non-edible format, but to have it in an edible format makes or suggests that it is, there's nothing wrong with that or it's safe. And what really scares me about that is that it can go from every grade. You know, before, it might have been something that would be, you know, it's every grade anyway, but an edible is something that could be ingested by anybody. And you hear it in all different forms. And I hear it all the time from kids, like, you know, it's safe because it's legal. And it's a really mixed message that's out there. And now we're driving through the city and you see billboards that say, you know, weed map. And it's something that we can't prevent because it's part of what's there. And the conversation has to be bigger. And we did have an incident in our schools. And that's what was really terrifying to me was to know that, and I think the reaction was correct with the parents. And I think Parent Academy would be incredible for our school system because there are a lot of great things that we're doing. And I do applaud that tremendously. But when we had that incident in our school, there was a moment where things were pulled back and slowed down, but then the communication didn't come back. So there were a lot of parents that were raising the issue of what's going on, what else is happening? No, I haven't heard anything from that. I hope they're tuning in tonight because I know there's a lot of stuff that is going on. And it's hard to, when something happens in your school system, to just have the answer for it because there's no quick answer for this. But education is the answer. And to know that you're in the system and you're able to answer some of those questions and working with our teachers, I think that's the key. And then actually getting that information up to the parents is also the key. Obviously, talking to our students on a regular basis. I love the, this is going to sound crazy if I'm saying this. I love the drug goggles because, you know, that's another thing where kids think that they are beyond the ability, like, it's not going to harm me one or two or whatever is not going to harm me. But they don't realize how fast they become impaired. And that's something, when you let them see that, that they, it's through humor and fun that they see it, but they don't realize how much that's going to do. So, and that has been, I've seen the goggles for a while, but the video is awesome. But I think that's, these are things that are important for people to know, and most importantly, our students, but then also, as Ms. Lito said, the parents. It's incredibly difficult for parents to process, especially because they may even support it. Some of the parents may have even supported it, but they didn't realize how fast it was going to get into their kids' hands or didn't think it would get into their kids' hands. And that's a bigger battle. Those edibles are something to me that's a bigger battle because it's not as easy to detect. You don't know when it's coming into the school system. And, you know, there's some real need for education around that. Thank you. Thank you all for your presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Mahoney. I have a question or a comment. Question, we had Attorney General Mark Hilly and District Attorney Mark Sieg make a presentation in the fall regarding a grant that we would possibly help with. Do you know the status of that, Mr. Superintendent?
I don't. I'm sorry. I don't know the specifics. I'm not sure what that grant was for.
I thought it was regarding opioids.
So, I have to just say, there's so many, you know, initiatives and opportunities. So what we've tried to do is really look at our funding. And we're so lucky, and I really meant it, that from the school committee to all the community members that donate to us, that you allow us to do these new initiatives and have these conversations, really these very difficult and complicated conversations about how we're going to intervene. And so we've been very strategic about what we need and what we're doing. So the Bay State Connection, we use that funding to train people, build capacity, and to see, you know, what's trending and what is the best way to intervene. You know, so we looked at different levels of interventions. That's why we have Drug Story Theater. That's like a parent engagement, and that's, you know, a community event. So we want to partner with parents, and they want help. I know parents are very concerned about their kids. They are right on target with this stuff. And so we just need to kind of join forces that way. So we have to just really be thoughtful about what we're doing and what we're offering. So there's so much going on. I'm sorry I can't answer your questions, but I'll follow up and I'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Okay.
And just as an aside, just, you know, every parent goes through this with their teenage kids. And no one's immune to, you'd be the best parent in the world, your kid could be the best kid in the world. And it doesn't matter. And parents really have to be vigilant about what their kids do on the weekends, where they're going, who they're with. And we can do all the education in the world in the school system, but if a parent is saying, you know, not my kid, my kid wouldn't do that. Wouldn't go to the mount or crush or rock. They're turning a blind eye to what is actually happening. So it's just, just parents to be aware. And, you know, I went through with my kids, and two brigade athletes, really good students. And they told me, Dad, you didn't even know. And I didn't.
And the advanced science curriculum, Mark, is also being done. So that means the advanced science curriculum will be moving into the other middle school grades next year. In the elementary school levels, teachers are working on becoming familiar with the new science standards. Grade five teachers worked with middle school teachers two years ago, and so they have a bit of a head start in their buildings. And the science ambassadors from DESI, the Department of Education, have come into Quincy Public Schools for training for grades three to five science-focused teachers. Classroom teachers ask for more time to understand the new standards before looking at new curriculum resources, very smart. And there is more interest in kids rather than textbooks. The second update we have is Ms. Howell and Mr. Tully presented on the High Needs English Learner Team. This is an incredible thing that's been going on in the district. It started in five of our elementary schools and has moved down to all the schools now. And this is a chance for our support staff to identify students who are English learners who may have other challenges to education, and they've been doing a great job. Ms. Howell told us that 4.3% of our Yale students are on IEPs. The work that we're doing now may allow us to give some curriculum combinations and prevent more students from going on IEPs and getting other services in the regular classroom. And that was it.
Any changes or corrections to these minutes? Saying none, they pass. Facilities and Security, Mrs. Hugle, report on the April 11 meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Prago. Facilities and Security Subcommittee met on April 11. Public Buildings Director Walter McCallan gave a wonderful presentation and reviewed the upcoming NSBA Accelerated Repair Program projects scheduled for completion this summer at the Beechwood Mall Elementary School. The school will have new windows, doors, and roof installed this summer, as well as new boilers. Due to this project's scope and cost, the ADA upgrades will also, also will be completed at this time, I think those required by law. The nineteen, nineteen exterior doors and almost 8,000 square feet of windows to be replaced. The roof will be completely replaced, additional drainage added to the gymnasium roof. The boiler room will be done over and both boilers replaced, as well as installed new management system, replacing the hot water heater, all-related mechanical piping, and compressor. The boiler room will be completely refurbished with new walls, floors, and lighting in the classroom built in bookcases. Under the windows will be replaced along with your air conditioning units. The nurses' area bathroom will be renovated, and a lift will be installed in the gym for the stage. A new walkway outside will also be built and installed, outside the building will be installed. During April vacation, testing on the new roof system will be performed in six areas of the building. But work, the actual real work, will be started on Tuesday, June 27th, after the last day of school for professional staff. The school will be fenced off to separate the basketball courts and the playground from its work. And we have been told that the playground and basketball courts will not be interfered with. The kids will still be able to have access to those for the summer. The only changes or corrections I have to these minutes is that the boiler room needs to be added to its remitted furnace. That's the boiler room. Thank you.
Okay. Any other corrections or revisions? Saying none, they pass. Quarterly Budget and Finance, Mrs. Lee, report on the April 11 meeting. Mrs. Lebo.
Yes, on April 11 at 6:00 PM. This is why we had a meeting on the quarterly budget report from Mr. Malaney. The Quincy Public Schools has expanded 50%, 57% of the salary budget due to date, which is where we should be probably, but we do have a $670,000 surplus in that line because of the unpaid leaves of absence for family medical maternity issues. This school year, we've had ten non-retiring leave of absences and 25 returning leave of absences, so we do have a young staff. On the deficit side, the substitutes that are being required to fulfill those positions where those people are out is on the deficit. So we really don't have a surplus, as it turns out. We thought, excitedly, that Mr. Malaney was going to tell us we were surplus and we could buy all sorts of new things, but it didn't work out that way. So there's an anticipated deficit in tuitions and transportation associated with special education line. But when all items are reconciled, we're still within the budget where we should be at this time of the year. Mrs. Mahoney asked for some additional information about our retirements and the custodial and transportation lines. And Mr. Malaney clarified that we've been not successful replacing all retired bus drivers due to the licensing requirements for that. We also talked a little bit about the Soul City reconciliation, and there's still confusion on Mr. Malaney's side, you know, the city's side, about what's going on with Soul City. And Ms. Mahoney asked if we could have an update on that as a topic at a future facilities meeting, when it becomes clearer to some of us what's actually going on before we can actually talk about it. I also asked, because we had asked this before, about the hiring practice beyond a future policy subcommittee meeting agenda, and that was the end of the budget.
Thank you, Mrs. Lebo. Any corrections or changes to these minutes?
This is 6 o'clock. 6 o'clock, it says, Mary.
Correction will be 6 o'clock on the down minutes. Thank you. And they're accepted. Executive session, there is none. Motion to adjourn.
No. Thank you very much.